I'd like to call the meeting of the Narragut Regional School District School Committee to order and we will stand with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I did want to note that this meeting is being recorded by NRSD in conjunction with Templeton Community TV or TCTV that's provided to Templeton and Phillipston Cable Access TV. It's also out on YouTube and Facebook and you can find it a whole bunch of places. The first order of business is we have the approval of meeting minutes for June 26th, finally. Thank you, Mrs. Varnie, for getting those recreated after the tragic crash. I know these were sent out. Does anybody, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve the minutes as written. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any comments or questions on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes unanimously. The meeting minutes of August 14th are not ready yet. We were hoping they might be, but we will carry those to the next meeting and have them ready for approval then. I don't see any bills and payrolls that needed approval at this point. We've been meeting so often, I just left it on there just in case. Student appearances, if the student rep, if there's anything to report on. Should you introduce yourselves?
Hi, I'm Emma Hughes. I'm going to be a senior.
I'm James Hool. I'm also going to be a senior.
We only have a few announcements since school hasn't really started. The first being that school is going to start on Tuesday. Personally, not that excited, but as a whole, we're pretty excited.
Yeah. We're really excited to announce our numbers for Freshman Academy. We have approximately 60 students signed up to come join us for Freshman Academy this Friday. And 35 of our upperclassmen facilitators are coming to help lead groups and help set up with everything. So we have our leadership training tomorrow and Freshman Academy on Friday.
And those numbers might go up as we will probably have students come who didn't tell us they were going to come and we're excited to see them. More updates, Band Camp was last week. That went really successfully. They started with not really much, but by the end of the week, they had a show together. We welcomed new members from Winchenden to the marching band, which is very exciting.
And for the marching band, they have a fundraiser coming up on September 14th, which is an electronic recycling fundraiser in the NRHS parking lot.
We've had practices going on for football, soccer, cross-country, field hockey, marching band, basically everything. And I know football had a scrimmage, like, I don't remember when, concept of time has gone.
It's Saturday.
Field hockey has a jamboree on Thursday. So yeah, seasons are kicking off.
I just have a question for you, Dr. Castman. Dr. Castman, is it too early for a snow day yet, or?
And not like we're counting, but there are only 273 days until graduation. Great update there.
See you there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now go to public input. If we have anybody in the audience that would like to come down and say anything. We do have our typical rules. We like to limit you to three minutes apiece. If there's anyone out there would like to say anything? Okay, seeing no one, we will move on. I carry the NDA line, but it is still summer, so I didn't really anticipate to see our rep here, which is probably a good thing, getting in the last relaxing days. Ongoing business, business managers' report. Okay. I know we did one two weeks ago, so, okay, nothing new to report. That's always a good thing. I'm going to ask the committee if we can just skip over FY '20 budget for the moment and go to the student handbook to get that approved, so that we can take the time needed for the FY '20 budget discussion. Is that okay with everybody? Okay. So, when we last met, we had gotten updates that the only handbook that had needed any type of updates was the high school handbook. And we were supposed to get any questions or comments to Mrs. Vassal on the information in the handbook that we might want to have more information or possibly see changed. I don't know if anyone had anything, but they would have been sent directly to Mrs. Vassal. At this point, if there are no issues that anyone has, I would entertain a motion to approve the student handbook, so, because it does need to get printed and ready for the students to come back on Tuesday. So, does anybody have comments or questions?
I actually read through it and I found things that I thought should be changed. On page five in discipline, it's the use of tobacco. And I thought we should add the vapor products, or...
It is in the newest version.
It is in the newest, on, under discipline, in, on page five. Because I know in another section, like later in the handbook, there's something about it, but not under discipline. On the version that I have electronically, is that the latest version?
I'd have to compare. I don't know if you can see if it is, but we certainly make that change. It is under the section about tobacco use. I believe that it's under discipline. But where we converged and did it by district, I'd have to just compare, but that is duly noted. So it should be consistent in every section that it says that.
Okay. And then, and I don't know if you did this or not, but within the handbook, it says like the cafeteria period is 25 minutes in length. Is that the correct?
No, it's 30, so that's a good catch, thank you very much.
Okay. And then, the library media center on page eight, it says the library hours are 7:35 to 2:15. Is that correct?
That should be correct, because we do try to keep that open in the morning and the afternoon for students to be able to use that.
Okay.
It actually should be a little bit later than 2:15.
Okay. Also on page seven, the second sentence, it says, "Next to first church and later in the," in the grammar, whatever, I don't know. It just says "in the," "in the." So one of the "in the" has to get removed. And then, as far as just the way that it's, I'll try to remember the word that I want.
Formatted?
Formatted, thank you. That's the word I want. There's like certain titles just need to be like spaced down a bit, or things like that. I've noticed that in a couple of different areas.
So spacing needs to be consistent.
Correct. And then, on page 16, do you want me to just give you this rather than go over the... Page 16, under guidelines regarding absence, students who are absent from school or an individual classes seven times or more. I think it should be individual class seven times or more, rather than classes.
No, because it's seven, it's four.
The way that it reads, it doesn't read...
It doesn't sound right?
It doesn't sound right. Just check that one.
Seven or more classes. That's easy enough to fix, just clarify.
Yep. And then, again, with formatting, there's some bullets that just need to be consistent. Under tardiness, the first period bell is at 7:44 a.m. Is that correct?
7:45. So 7:41 is the warning bell, 7:45 is the start of the first.
Okay. So that's, that's under tardiness. And then, on page 30, for infractions which may lead to suspensions, number two, violations of rules on tobacco products, it should also add the vaping device on that. I think that's all I found. The only other thing, because I was reading all that, that I wanted to bring to the attention of our superintendent and the facilities manager, is the, we need more signs on the bleachers regarding vaping on school property, because while we were at a scrimmage this weekend, there were people in the stands that were vaping and I didn't see any signs that were very visible.
I haven't seen any vaping signs out there.
That would be great.
Yeah. Second to that, and I think they need to be many and very noticeable, because I know we have one and it sits on the building, but it would be nice to sit on the bleachers and right there in front of you, because people don't understand that that's...
I would love to have more of that.
Well, you know that, that thing that goes over the little railing thing?
Yes.
If we could like print it, like, just like a continuous, you know, like no smoking, your dogs can't be here, and, you know, no vaping, and...
Are you excited?
You know, I can do whatever.
She's good at her craft.
I could get a Sharpie and do it too, if you want.
I'll run a Sharpie.
Okay.
Good point, Lori. Was there any other comments from the school committee? So what I'm hearing is that we would approve the handbook with the following changes, and I'm going to sum up kind of what Lori said, that we need to make sure that any place that talks about tobacco, we include vaping. And I think there's a whole, there's a nice little, in our policy, we have a nice little paragraph that represents about 400 things that are against the rules. We need to check the timing on the cafeteria to make sure that's updated, check the times on the library and media center. There's some grammar and formatting issues throughout. And check time on the tardiness as well. And I think that encapsulated the goal of your points. So if that's the case, and hearing no other comments from any of the school committee members, I would entertain a motion to approve the handbook with those changes taken care of.
So moved.
And I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That passed unanimously. Thank you. And if Vassal wants those, she can have a copy.
Yeah, until they all give it to you.
All right. Next up is our FY '20 budget discussion. As we are all aware, since we were there at the district-wide town meeting last Wednesday, the motion on the floor was an amended motion to approve a budget of $19,500,000, which is a reduction of what our current certified amount is of $286,889. We were asked to compromise, and, which is to the tune of that, $286,000. And we are here tonight to discuss what our next course of action would be. I will lay out the possibilities, so everyone's aware of where we can go and what it means. We could certify at the $19,500,000 or any number lower. If we did that, we would have an approved certified budget and we would be done with our budget process this year. The other option we have is to take a number that's higher than 19,500,000, so any number higher than 19,500,000, including our current certified number of the 19,786,889, would cause us to have to go once again back to another district-wide town meeting. It's my understanding that although it isn't written specifically, we have 45 days from the date of August 21st to have that meeting, where again, we would bring both towns in, go through the same process, and ask the townspeople to vote on that as well. So those are really our two different options. So I would entertain either a motion from someone, or if we've got questions, comments, we can do that first.
I have one question. How much did the election, or the town meeting cost?
Do we have a number on that yet?
I gave him a minute.
Okay. We can't find records from the last time we did it, so we really don't have anything to compare it to.
Okay.
So, my guess is it's probably a couple thousand, few thousand dollars, maybe?
Two or three.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes.
But it's not for us. It's for someone on the select board or the advisory board. Does Templeton have free cash, certified free cash?
It has certified, yeah.
Do we have a number of that?
Of what it possibly could be? I do not.
I doubt that that's available right now. It's going, they have to close out their books and everything. Most of that, do you think it's concernable?
No.
No.
So it's not the new certification?
Last year.
But that certification expired.
It rolls into next year's free cash, which at that point was...
Last year's.
Yeah.
Was there certified cash last year? Yes, there was almost a million and a half dollars, Templeton had.
The year prior to that was zero.
No, the year prior to that was over a million dollars. The year prior to that, you had three years of no certified free cash, because the books weren't audited, so.
I mean, I don't know where we're at. We're just ready to discuss the whole budget thing, but I'm not just concerned about this year. The more I, the more we talk about this, the more we go into it, I'm really concerned about next year, because we're talking, we're looking at possibilities of cutting so close, we're not going to have anything to E and D, which by the way, we've already used $500,000 to balance this year's budget on. We're not going to have E and D. I mean, I don't know what it's going to look like. I shouldn't say we're not going to have it, but we're not going to have, I can't even imagine we're going to be close to what we have this year. I can't even imagine.
And I think the other point to that too, Vicki, is that on top of the $500,000 of the $635,000 certified E and D, we've already pledged $300,000 of Medicaid receipts that we haven't billed for yet. It's FY '20 dollars that we anticipate billing for, so that's at risk too. If we don't bill anything, we don't have the money and we're short. Now, I think history hasn't shown that we should be able to bill for that amount, but anything we put into that line cuts into monies that would normally fall over and go into an E and D figure for the following, it would be two fiscal years out because of, by the time it gets certified. So, we've just plugged $800,000 of monies that really are one-time monies into our ongoing budget.
Yeah.
That's very scary to do, leaving us with very little. We already know from the last time that we, I think when we got together at the end of June, that we've already had one out district placement that's costing us $85,000.
So, to that, I was asked, I just treated it as an information request, someone had asked me, what were the last, in explaining what can happen with the move-in and special vacation, I had made the, I had made the statement that just, again, FY '19, where I said that this year, we had two students move into the district that of course, we were not budgeting for, but that required, they were already involved in some, you know, in some type of, I forget, out-of-district placement. And interestingly, that one actually was a residential, which, and again, the family moved into the district, the child is still residential, and of course, that was a cost. And this other child that moved into the district required additional assistance. So luckily, that happened at the end of the year. So, and why do I say that? It's because, well, at the end of the year, if there was, if we had any type of savings or otherwise, we were able to, the bill wasn't as much. So if someone moves in in April and you are, although we haven't given you an example, but if, say, March, you know, March, and you'll just carry that, that unexpendanted, you know, bill until June, so that's, you know, you can kind of sweep by there. Well, what you worry about, of course, everybody worries about this, is your September, October, November, December move-ins in this case. Does it happen all the time? No. I will openly say that it doesn't happen all the time. Last year, it happened twice, and it happened in the same month. So we, about, give or take a couple of weeks, we were able to make it. But of course, those two out-district placements, or one out-of-district placement and with major into that district placement, of course, then factored into FY '20 budget. So it's a timing thing. It truly is a timing thing, and they are our kids the minute they move in here, regardless of, you know, what their needs are. So, we did not have that in E and D. You can tell by the shape that what we had, you know, what we used last year is that we, let's see, we used up to over $50,000. That placement, and again, I have to double-check it, but it's supposed to $125,000. $50,000, you're waiting on it. So we have to be prepared, you can't park money. That wouldn't be right. That would be, that wouldn't be, I don't think it's ethical, meaning you just park money in case. So you try to balance it off and you are very open about the process and you leave money in E and D, and everyone sees that it's there. And you talk about such things as special occasion, although I think that gets a bad rap. It could be a lot of different things, but that seems to be the best example that people understand.
And typically, the most expensive.
And it's, I don't want to pull it long, but generally speaking, the most expensive.
So I have to imagine since the town, the joint town meeting, I know you guys have gone back to the books and looked to where you can make, so I know, for example, I know just because of where I work, salaries change, you know, you have somebody leave, we seem to have a revolving door. You have somebody leave, you have somebody come in, the salary might be $10,000 less than the person that left. So I'm assuming that we've gone to that point, that we've looked at those costs where we might find $5,000 here and $5,000 there.
So Vicki, let me just speak to that, because this really concerns me, okay? Having done budgeting for a long time. You start taking $5,000 here because it's a save, we take $10,000 because we waited to hire. Well, I got to tell you, next year, that bites us in the butt.
Because that's how it doesn't roll into E and D.
Exactly. And that becomes a very big issue, and although we can nickel and dime, and it's not what we need, and we still have a couple of open positions, we could be hiring them at higher than the person who left, based on experience. So whatever saves, we may need them. We may come middle of the year, we may have a teacher who leaves, and we may find we need a replacement who needs to make more. We put ourselves at risk every time we do that, and every time we come together, every year, we go back to the same thing. Oh, we'll try and, and we'll carve the $36,000 and we'll put budget towards it. And then next year, we're back here having the same discussion.
We're going to be here next year, regardless of what we do this year. We're going to be here next year in the same place.
Now, I think if you go back, anybody in the town puts the YouTube on, looks at the financial meetings that we've had, both in the school and the town, and both together. You can go back as early as March 28th, 2018, when I was then chairman and I asked a town administrator, I said, "We're doing this for police, we're doing this for fire. You're telling us to hold off, delay what the kids need, build it up, use," in '18, we had an E and D of 635, we used 500 to balance the budget. So look at those Youtubes. What I don't understand, I can give you a list, it goes back into, that was FY '18, I was reading the E and D. But it goes back to the idea that we have justified what our students need. We have done things that I don't agree with and voted against, because we have a fifth grade teacher in school choice, a sixth grade teacher in school choice, we have a principal, at least we did last time, a principal, an assistant principal, doesn't matter, the salary's not that different, in school choice. The concerning one is health insurance. Now, school choice is exactly what it says, it's a choice. And if those things don't happen, we owe our employees. You worry about class numbers. We were, we had an audience then, when we were talking about numbers that weren't that much higher than some of our area of towns. And we had them in here saying, "We can't do that. Everything comes at a cost. If we're going to do what the community says you're going to do to schools for kids," go back and look at Youtubes. I'm not making it up. I've been here. I've seen it. I saw the town administrator stand, sit right there and say, "Yeah," with smirk on his face. And it was. And then it turns around and he says, "Zero," at a finance meeting I'm going to do for the town. Now, some people who are sitting here today weren't there then, but the YouTube is there. It's like our notes used to be years ago. Now you can just put it on, do your dishes, and hear what people said and see their faces. We cannot keep saying to kids, and I can, because the educational system keeps moving forward, what we require keeps going forward. Many of us sitting here don't have children in school, such as myself. I did. I have grandchildren in other schools. I expect them to have the chance that all other children have. So when we put this budget on, and we have had it here, year after year, one year we gave back to the town $300,000. Then they went for an override for the fire and got it, and this year, they're taking the override money in part away from this ambulance fire. Why? They took the override money we had passed for the school away and stood there and said, "We expect to give you zero." One questioned about, it's right there on the video, I'll bring that up in the back screen if you want to come in. One question, but I never said zero. That's one thing YouTube doesn't allow you to do anymore. What I'm saying right now, it's right there. Zero in March is what we're giving you. We sat at the table with them since October. There are people here who heard that and know it. The point is, we're not making this stuff up to make things uncomfortable. I live here. All I ask is that you look at the history of this and you look at why we need these things for kids. You want your kids in the town of Templeton to be able to go out and compete with other children, to apply to colleges, to have the self-confidence that all the other kids in the state of Massachusetts have, it costs something. And we're telling you what the bare minimum of that, now, if we keep cutting what Mrs. Chardia just said, "Oh, we saved $20,000 because we hired somebody who has less experience." Well, that's sad, because the experienced person walked out the door. And your kids now are catching up with this other one, who will do it, we've all been first-year teachers. However, it costs. We moved things that were around. You know, you're saying, "Oh, come on, school, compromise." Go to your YouTube, see the compromise. What I'd like you to do is look at those little kids' faces as they walk in the school buildings and ask them to compromise. Because that's what this budget means to me. And I've done it, year after year after year, and I have visual proof of it, and I'm not putting something in front of you that's fluff. It's not there. We, I'm going to say this one more time, because we're all going to hear, "Public safety, I live here, I live on a road I can barely get down." You're darn right.
I'm astute.
What I'm saying, I want police coverage, I want fire, I voted for those overrides, as many people in this town did. It's the school's time, that's what we were told. And now we're sitting here saying, "Oh, cut $250,000 out of what?" I'm not, it's, it's not going to hap, don't have my vote. And I do vote against things. I do not vote what everybody wants. I was not happy with taking the school choice and filling up classes, hiring another teacher with money from other people's kids that we now have to support for 12 more years. The compromise has to be honored at the part that it was at. We intend to do that. Thank you.
I also have to say too, that we heard a lot of the parents, community members in the town of Phillipston, and they turned around and stood up to lower our budget. That didn't go unnoticed either. We worked, we fought hard. They fought hard, and we heard and we listened to keep that school as it is, and they stood up against our budget. That hurt.
So, if I may, so, I need to clear, and I don't believe the quote was, I think it was, it was the wording of the quote, and they were led this, led to believe that they could get these cuts. And I want to make sure I... get these cuts. And I want to make sure I touch upon this. Yes, the question was, there are these two options as it was presented to me. Don't, the school committee would present, would certify the original number, which, okay. But what would the lower number do? That was the question, okay? What are the two? The lower number, and I think that this is, and I think this piece of paper, quite frankly, went equals purses or pockets. First off, our budget is not $19 million.
That's true. Yes.
Our budget, just to be clear, is $42,889,779. That's what our budget is. When you take, basically reduce what the, what the amounts are going to be distributed to the towns, and you look at what all those funding sources are, on this piece of paper, you see those receipts. So in the end, what happens is that you receive a number, okay? So, this number one, it costs far more than $19,000 to run this district. And by the way, it has always cost more than the number that is passed on to the towns, of course, because we utilize school choice, cafeteria revolving, okay, you get it. All right? So those offset the total cost. Much of what was debated or discussed the other night, and I understand the rationale, is that, well, it's really kind of no loss because you get to keep your number because of what you do is you take this amount of money, take, what was, what was actually this quote is that if you take all of those extra monies, which they're not really that, but you take the E and D, push that in, and whatever little amount left, I don't know, chapter seven, you push that in, and you literally leave zero room. Yeah, then this number becomes lower. Sure. Well, that's assuming something. That one, and I've said this plenty of times, that you're assuming that we should do that in the best interest, I guess, of everyone. I personally, we had a very great meeting just the other day, there were two members in here, we talked about the pitfalls of putting all of that money. Mr. Terrancey was on the, again, on YouTube, he spoke about that, that would be financially a mistake to push all of the E and D money in towards, because then that means the following year, we have to make that up. And if it doesn't happen, then whatever the difference is, it gets absolutely passed on to the towns. So on a financial basis, we all agree, it is not smart to do that, okay? Why in the world, why in the world would anyone expect that the school would follow suit? If it doesn't make physical sense, and yes, desperate times call for desperate measures, I understand that. But you literally would be, if that was the case, then I could use that against the town. I could literally use the same argument. Well, desperate times call for desperate measures. If you truly cared about public safety, if I was to do this, then why don't you just take it out of your free cash? Or why not out of your stabilization? If, one could argue that it's the town that doesn't really value public safety because they haven't used their available funds. Bad argument. No one, no one believes that anyone is anti, you know, doesn't believe in public safety. That is, that is, that has got to be, obviously, whoever watches will see this. But here's the real deal. I couldn't see, honestly, from where I was on this meeting, to be very handy, nor could we hear from later on. Whoever stood, whoever didn't stand, that's their, honestly, their picture aren't right, okay? They stand and you vote here. Everyone deserves that vote. But hear this now, if it had to happen, because this is what didn't make it in the paper. If you had to cut $300,286 right now, without touching those extra funds, because you wouldn't do that because nothing fall back on. Here's the scenario. We're talking about moving kids from Phillipsden into Templeton. There is no other cut. I have no idea what people were thinking otherwise, but if you are from Templeton or Phillipsden and you don't like that idea, guess what? $300,000, if you don't mind me rounding up, means absolutely that. Am I saying the whole school? Nope. But at least two grades are coming right off the bat. Guaranteed, if not more. And of course, other cuts just wouldn't be that. So I don't understand the rationale, to be honest. But people vote what they should vote. So if that somehow was, I guess, interpreted that I was signaling somehow that there could be these cuts, that's not what the question was. What would need to happen was the question. And even if we did push all in, right, we're still $100,000 short, but that made the paper. And if I had to cut $100,000, if the committee so chose, I'm going to tell you, cuts are going everywhere and it's going to mean moving kids. There is no other option. Scare tactic. I can hear it on Facebook in about 10 minutes. Nope. Not a scare tactic, folks. We're staff intensive. We yield people. That's, that's our commodity. Okay? So I absolutely echo this because that is truly the issue at hand here. You don't want kids moving here and there, then you're not, then if you cut this anything, that's exactly what's happening. So I, I want to make sure I said that aloud because it did not play out necessarily as well as it should have in the paper.
Yeah, they took one quote and it was very misleading.
It was just, yeah, because the way it was, I think, the way it was actually spiced, but that's, that was the intent of it.
And because of that, I'm not supporting moving kids or moving across the district. I am not supporting it. Even though some people, that surprised me, stood up in favor of the 1905, I'm not in favor of moving kids across the district. I want to stay with the 1907.
Yeah, I guess, yeah. I just want to say, actually, you know, I think Rayanne did a nice job in her speaking. Okay. As Chris said, as Vicki just alluded to, I myself was very disappointed at some of the members, some of the individuals, the way that they, that I did see them vote at last week's meeting. I was surprised, I was disappointed. This committee here, as Rayanne said, we put a lot of time into what we're looking. We've done a lot of research. We've really looked at the numbers. We have had parents from both towns in this very room here that were very upset, that came to us in tears, that were talking. And, you know, I've heard, you know, "Well, the vote is the vote, you know? Why don't you do what the townspeople have said?" I just want everybody to know that I'm not ready to go that way. We fought for that school, okay? We've told people that we were going to fight for that school. And I'm not ready to give up that fight, okay? I'm just not ready to give that fight up. I have received many emails, many phone calls from people from both of the towns, okay? And I appreciate those, okay? I want you to know that I have heard you. But it is both ways. I am getting emails from, from people that are still asking me, you know, they do not want to split the district up. They do not want to close the school, okay? And I am not ready to do that. So that's, I just want to let that out there, okay?
During the Doyle Town meeting, Mr. Curry had stood up and asked that the school committee look at the real numbers and not the estimates and not the round figures. Did you happen to look at that and look back at the estimates and the, and the round figures he was talking about and see if there were any savings?
We had prior to that meeting, we had looked at those, right?
We asked estimates.
Yeah. And so, I, but to be honest, to transparency, I just, so there's a guess, I don't know how, I don't know how to guess is going to answer your question, but I'm going to throw it out there anyway. Because of the way the buildings need to be prepped, I guess, to open, for example, all the systems, including the HVAC and the boilers, et cetera, have to run at 20, 20, at full bore, basically, for 23 days, okay? For example. The other part is that all this electricity, you've seen, of course, we certainly heard, "All the lights are on all night, all the lights are on all night." Well, guess what? That's part of it, believe it or not. I don't build buildings, but that's what they do. Well, those costs, since, and I believe, and this will come up actually at our next Templeton elementary building meeting, is that the contractor is going to cover all of the, for example, the electricity costs up until August, it was, it was August 7th, okay? So my point is that I don't know what that saves us because we don't know ultimately, but we certainly have used far more electricity in the last couple of months than we ever would. Because remember, every light has to be on, everything has to be at full bore, okay? So, but the project had to pay for it. Had to. Okay. So I don't, I guess that's the only thing that I could say to remotely, I don't know ultimately what it's going to be, but those are the two factors that will come up in conversation in a week, I guess, whenever our next, our next meeting is. I don't know how else to.
So like, I think, did, in, in our budget, you didn't put rounded numbers or estimates other than with the Templeton Center School, you had to use estimates because we didn't really know.
Exactly.
That is correct.
We actually lowered our electricity on this building for FY20 over FY19 because we've had savings from the change of the light bulbs.
Yep. Okay.
Vicki, let me, I just want to, I've said it before, and I am a facilities manager, I am a project manager, I know the cost that we're talking about. Those are design costs, okay? I just want to be very clear about that. Those are design costs. We won't know that until we run through a full academic plan, okay? We need to run through it. We don't know, there's a loading dock there. We don't know how long loading dock is going to be open for bringing in food and bringing in equipment. We have children coming in off the bus. We won't know that. When they make those estimations that they're talking about, those are design estimations. Until we understand how would actually operate in that building, we will not know those costs. They have to be estimated, okay? And the factors that we've used, the numbers that we've used to do the estimation is, in this case, today, the best case that we can do to get those numbers.
That answer your question? Any other comments? I have one, surprise. I, I just feel like I need to walk through history one more time and say it loud and clear that when we came to this table, we were looking at a $20,383,000 budget. And when we first asked to compromise, we cut that budget almost $600,000. So asking us to compromise, we already have. What I have yet to hear is available options for compromise. It's come back to the school and tell us to cut more. I have yet to hear someone say, "Maybe we should ask the taxpayers in Templeton if they'd be willing to foot the $200,000 that Templeton needs to make the gap between the cuts you say you can make and providing for public safety." All I hear is, "Nope, two to one, you voted it down." No, you, two to one, you voted a million dollars down. You haven't even asked your taxpayers, okay? This is a democracy, not a dictatorship. You haven't asked your taxpayers whether or not they would like to fund that bill because they value both education and public safety. And I have to say, it really aggravates me that you haven't done that yet, okay? That's number one for this compromise. Number two, I think I would like to reiterate what Vicki and Jeff alluded to, that seeing people stand in Phillipsden for a lower number, I don't understand it. We've done everything we can to try and keep that school open, keep our kids where they need to be. And yet, we saw many, many people stand up and vote for a number that was lower. I have yet to hear someone explain why. I'd like to know why. Because if there is something, please let us know. Right? That, that's being said. And I just, I feel that we, year after year, continue to do a disservice to our students, okay? We are here to provide them with the best, best services academically, emotionally, safety, okay? Yet, let's go to safety. I've just been informed recently that our SRO shift has been changed from nine to five, from seven to three. Well, we don't have kids here from nine to five. We have them here for seven to three. And you know what? We pay for those services. We give the town of Templeton money to have that SRO officer in our buildings. I want to know why they have been reassigned, okay? If you don't want us to pay you for it, we can look to maybe our other municipality, find something else. But that is not a solution that keeps our kids safe. I understand that it has been a stretch for Chief Bennett and he's trying to do everything he can. But we have a contract and we pay for those services. And I need that addressed, and I need it addressed immediately since we start school. When? Tuesday.
Thursday.
Tuesday, okay? That is not acceptable to me. And I don't know if everyone on this committee was aware of that, but that is what's going on and it is not acceptable.
So who makes that decision? Is that, like, is that a done deal?
So, just, the police department, in fact, is a police department, right? So, under all circumstances, we would choose seven, three, for 180 or so long days, we have a resource officer for 180, and we pay approximately half of that salary from the Rockland campus. And then, of course, the other 180 days, they are, they're always a police officer, but they're back on, but obviously, they're going to go, which is patrol, for lack of a better word, they will keep on. So the issue becomes, and you're exactly right, Chief Bennett, the way, as it was explained to me, and I, let me say for the record, I don't understand, again, it's not what I do, but ultimately, the way they have to stagger their existing police officers, because of the gap in the morning, meaning that there's this, actually, early morning on, right, midnight, that it only works that they can bring someone on at a certain time, but the busy time is in the afternoon, the chief Bennett said that X amount of, a very high percentage of anything that they have to deal with happens between hours of three and eight. And only one police officer is on, again, would only be on given that the SRO was on or set in the three. So the idea was to take the SRO time, move him up to nine at 9:00 AM. So that way, he would be on until five, giving them, I believe, and again, I could be wrong, but two officers at that crucial time where I'm just.
And again, I don't want to interrupt, but I appreciate the fact that Chief Bennett has done what he felt he needed to do. He was failing to recognize that we have a contract to cover our school day that we pay for. So it is in, it is, it's a business arrangement. We need coverage for school day. So I certainly appreciate and understand the challenges that he faces. Don't get me wrong, I'm sensitive to that. I don't want anybody to not have their roads fixed, to have the police to the fire. That's, that's not where I'm going, okay? Because we can go back to point one that I made. Let's ask the taxpayers to see if they're going to help support some of this. Okay? But the fact of the matter is, is we're opening a school in six days and we're not going to have Officer Sowicki, I waved to him every morning when I used to drop my kids. I don't have to do that anymore, thank goodness. My daughter drives. But I used to wave to him every morning, making sure that we're safe with these kids. We have so many kids coming in and out of this building. Who's going to be there?
But the point is, our need is from seven to nine.
Seven to three.
Just whatever, no, well, if it is covered, those are our hours of need identified as that police chief is taking care of his business. We're sitting here tonight, taking care of ours, telling you, nine to five is not taking care of our kids, nor do we want to pay for it. We need them taken care of from seven to nine, including those others.
That's your question.
Obviously, the concern is that we have 1,488 currently students in the district. And between the hours of, again, seven, eight, 40, roughly, they all transition somewhere. Whether, so, all 1,488 transition into the schools in that very tight environment.
I just want to clarify, I would never in a million years tell the town of Templeton to cut their public safety. I would just say, do whatever you got to do to find a way to fund it, because, whether it's in stabilization, whether it's in your soon-to-be-certified free cash until you can, I'm not telling you how to do it. I don't encourage, would want you to cut your public safety. I just don't know how it's going to run the school.
But we need our safety covered. We have a contract, hopefully it's on, we have a contract that, that we will be able to hire, and those are our hours we're hiring for.
Yes, Mrs. Mattson. Were you done with your speech? Because you touched upon something that reminded me of something.
Have added me. If I think of something else, I'll jump in.
Um, so, speaking of the police and a contract, I believe we all received a letter from the police union in Templeton, and that was from Eric Smith. And he mentioned how because of the cuts, they weren't going to be able to cover a shift in Phillipsden. And again, if, if they have a contract or if they provide a service to Phillipsden, I don't understand why they're not covering that.
I don't want to interrupt, but I think that, that was, they provide, when Phillipsden goes off duty, if a call comes in, it's, I forget what, there's a term that you guys use.
Mutually.
Mutually. They first, it's not a contract, but it is something that all law enforcement agencies give to one another. So it's, it's not, we have a contract with, we pay for it. That is not a pay-for. So it's, it's not, we have a contract with, we pay for it, that is not a pay-for contract type of thing, that's a service, they render to each other.
I believe it's just like the state police would be, Templeton's not on duty.
Exactly. Yes.
Yes, it does.
Could last year's free cash from the town have been used toward some of this modules?
If it was before June 13th.
We, we voted our budget on June 4th, you knew what was coming.
Yep.
And yet you failed to use anything, and now it's going to be our fault that the police and the fire are going to have to make cuts?
I think, I just wanna clarify that it is not our fault.
Yeah, I know, I know, and yet everyone's going to say we're the bad guys.
Well, and it's frowned upon, and I understand it's frowned upon to use free cash to balance your budget, just like it's frowned upon to use E and D to balance ours. I don't know what the answers are, I just know that we have to have the staff in place, and you need to have your public safety in place.
Well, all I know is John Kaplis about that he was not gonna use free cash, and if he was still on the, on the, on the board on June 4th, then until he was voted off, they were not gonna use free cash under his chairmanship, and, um...
He also said that they don't use the override money for anything other than what it's voted in for. Not true. Because, because...
Actually, if I just, if I may, an override is for a specific item for the first year.
One year.
And after that, it just, it ends up in the pile.
I understand.
You can't say, you can't say it's, that extra money is going, and it usually doesn't because everything goes up, because we're all in the same boat, and we're all making bad choices.
I apologize, I take that back, but when asked at town meeting if it ever had been used for anything other than what it was voted for, the answer was no. It hadn't been, but it has been.
But it has been.
You can find that on YouTube. I can find that on YouTube.
Do in the dishes.
One year, yeah, that's...
I understand that you need to use it too, just like we have to use extra money that we get in.
Just so people are clear.
Thank you, and I apologize, and I didn't mean to badmouth Mr. Kaplis.
But it, it doesn't go for what it was for after the first year, I mean, so you're right, except for the first year.
It, it, yeah, it should, but that's not the way the law's written. So the law states, specific purpose to get it passed, after that, it's...
You would think when you vote for it, that's where it would keep, but it...
No, and you're right, and that's the law, and...
Well, it don't work that way.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, Diane, I'm sorry, Diane, you were, you wanted to...
Well, I was just saying that the, there was a, a million dollar override that was done many years, several years ago, and the school gets it every year by a gentleman to bring it.
Except this past year when we asked for it, we were $167,000 taken away.
But he may have said no. He may have said no, but we did give you money.
But, but it was 167,000 short of what we needed, but...
It's, it's short, and that's why you went for an override, but the town overwhelmingly said no.
To a million dollars, into a million.
And this is what I believe that we would not ask for an override, because we were inundated with phone calls, all of us, no override, no override, no override.
Thank you, we got it, we got it, thank you, Mr. Joy.
That's why we haven't asked.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Joy.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I sent this at the joint meeting, and, because I know two of you talked about wanting to keep Phillipston more open, and I do understand that the, the thing behind that, but really what you're asking is the town of Templeton to keep that school open.
Okay, I'm gonna stop right there because, no, I'm, I'm honestly, I'm gonna stop you right there, because until an analysis is done, we don't know what the numbers are going to say. The town of Phillipston already pays more than the town of Templeton for pupil, so I don't know how it would, it's worth the exercise, um, it's on the agenda to get to, if in fact, you know, once we ever get to a budget, that'll be next up. Also, just know that if there were any changes to, um, allocation methodology, it would need to be worked into the agreement, which could take quite some time to do, because we know Desi needs to be heavily involved with changes, but, again, it will be, it will be looked at, because you're absolutely correct.
Exactly, I was gonna just, that's what I was gonna ask, is when will you have that? I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna make a decision now, that, but when that analysis is done, I think it's important.
It's, it's on the docket. Hopefully, we move quicker than Congress, that's all I can say. Any other questions or comments? Um, I would entertain a motion from someone to present a budget number that we can, uh, move towards and then decide what we need to do once that budget motion is made.
I move we keep at the 1976, 889.
So I have a motion on the floor that we maintain the current certified budget of
I'll say it.
And I have a second. Um, any discussion, comments, questions?
I do have a question.
Sure.
So, um, on the sheet here, we do have the 19.5. Um, I'm just wondering how they got down to 19.5, with what cuts, just the move?
No, no, there was no cuts decided, that was just what the towns voted, we haven't even looked at.
Oh, we haven't...
No, 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 if we, if we chose to certify that number, then we'd be back with Dr. Kazivan and Mrs. Geister, um, if they were still around to decide what cuts we would need to make.
So, so we don't have anything on any sheet that says no?
No, no, it's all, as you see on that one, it's all says TPD, we don't know what we need to do.
Where's this TPD?
The yellow one.
It's all this, uh, to the chairman, this, here, let's see, it's all TPD.
Oh, okay, oh, all right.
Mike, can I do a question though? Do you have the final numbers on insurance?
On the, I'm sorry?
Any insurance?
Um, Mrs. Geister, have we gotten any guidance on insurance other than, we got, did we get a firm number on insurance yet?
I don't have the input, but we have the policy.
Okay, and that's already been worked into the numbers and factored into, um, everything? I mean, it's, it's half of its paid at school choice anyway, it's cut, almost a moot point.
Okay.
On health insurance, you're talking about, right?
Building insurance.
Oh, building, oh, I thought you were talking health.
I'm sorry.
Building, so, we're, we're gonna discuss the lease as a new item, and I think maybe we could discuss the insurance at that point. So let's get through this piece first, and then we'll go from that, go to there. All right, so I have a motion on the floor for, uh, to keep the current certified amount of $19,786,889, and I have a second. Any other questions? Um, I am gonna do a roll call vote then, seeing no questions or comments, um, that we keep that certified number. Mr. Mason?
Aye.
Mrs. Mattson?
Aye.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Aye.
Mr. Hojel?
Aye.
Mrs. Tripolo?
Aye.
Mrs. Chardier?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
And Mrs. Hughes says aye. So we have a unanimous, um, vote that we will have, keep our current certified number. Um, what that means then is we will be looking to schedule another district-wide town meeting, and that needs to happen within 45 days, um, of the 21st, which means, did anyone already calculate that number?
October 5th.
October 5th, thank you.
Starting the next day.
Okay, all right, so by October 5th, we need to have had a district-wide town meeting, so we should probably pick a date to get that scheduled. Um, let's see, we, we have our next school committee meeting, I say this lightly, for September 18th, um, we could do it the week after that, which would be the 25th, um, that gives us that five weeks to get everything put together, get school opened, and focus on all of the good things happening, um, and then be able to bring the towns back together, do with, how, I don't know how that works for everybody on the 25th of September.
I will be away on vacation, we're going to Europe.
You'll come?
You may, sure.
Would everybody else be here, or would, should we, um, it's a Wednesday, I'm looking at Wednesdays, um, we could, we could do it the week before and push our school committee meeting to the following week or the week before, if I'm sure.
No, everybody...
Okay, so September 25th, does that work for everybody? Seven o'clock?
Something, I'm sorry, for regular school?
For, no, the regular school committee is on the 16th.
District, okay, district.
Um, so the district-wide town meeting we would do on Wednesday, September 25th. Um, okay, hold on, let me write this down. District-wide town meeting is gonna be Wednesday, 9:25 at 7:00 PM. Um, we have our warrant that has already been vetted through legal, that all we really have to do then is change the dates. Um, so we probably should, um, unless Mrs. Barney has a way to print it and have it for us in the next, um, for this evening, we would have, we should schedule a, another meeting where we can...
Let's see if we can get it done tonight.
Um, so...
If you can't, that's okay, Susan, we'll come back.
Okay, so if you can work on that while we move on to the next pieces, and then we'll come back and do whatever we need to, uh, as a committee to get that hap, make that happen. Okay, so that takes us, yes?
Do we have to get together again and pick another, um...
Yes, so we'll have to do another moderator, so again, that'll be, um, that's, thank you, Lori, so we should probably look to, at least pick a date and push it out to the select boards to see if they're available. Uh, do we wanna do that sooner rather than later? Any thoughts? Since actually it's Dr. Kazivan who's officially named as the keeper of the minutes from that meeting. They said we do meet the 16th, which is, no, not the 16th, the 18th.
18.
But I believe that the select boards also meet on that night, if I'm not, yeah, so that makes it tough to do on a Wednesday, um, because everybody else has, has business.
Couldn't we do it a half hour before? The 18th?
So we normally meet at six, could, I don't know whether we want availability, maybe we could test the...
For the moderator?
Yes, we could.
I, I think that we'll, we'll probably have some discussion, basically, carry forward, that's what, that's what I could assume, that would occur, we might email us between the doctors taking, uh, our...
Okay, so we still need to meet though, to make it official.
Would you agree with that, or do you think that we're just gonna start from scratch?
Well, I think we still need to officially meet, because we're, the boards, you do need to vote on it, so even if you vote to reconfirm and keep things in, that's fine, uh, but we do need official vote for the records, um, so that...
You do or we do?
We, we do, because the law states that...
But we, we voted in at the meeting, the district meeting.
You know what?
But Mr. Flynn was voted in at the meeting.
So, so let us do this, let's qualify with maybe counsel to see if that appointment would last through all of our district-wide town meetings, or if he feels that the way the law's written, we would need to, um, reconvene and have another appointment made. We'll find out, because if, if counsel advises that...
That's my feeling, is that if we don't need to be, you know, it's...
Okay, well, let's, let's, we'll have counsel weigh in, and then we'll go with whatever he recommends. Okay. Okay, so that, and if so, we'll circle back and we'll figure out something. It should be a quick meeting, I would think, but we'll have to do it if need be, and we'll get that scheduled, okay? Um, okay, thank you, Lori, anything else that I'm forgetting?
So, did we pick a date?
No, we're not going to wait till counsel comes back.
No, they're...
Right. Um, I'm gonna move on to the lease, no, we have a school committee, yeah, well, Mrs. Barney does her magic on that warrant, um, so, as we, we discussed the last time, we did receive a draft of a lease from, um, Templeton, um, I had provided some initial commentary, and it was sent off to, um, our council for comments back. We haven't received it, I didn't wanna send it to everyone until the, till counsel weighed in on things, because some of my thoughts are probably crazy, um, but, has he gotten back to yet?
So I spoke with Mayor McConnell today, um, and actually spoke with, um, the attorney who was at, obviously, he's the attorney, maybe, because he would be, I'm understanding, um, and that Sharon, she was already telling me that we needed, we needed this, this, this ASAP, so I would expect, I was hopeful expecting a day or so, when, today, I don't know, but my calls are today, I was too far.
Did you happen to ask if there was an ability for us to do some sort of temporary lease to give us use of the building while the, all the little things are being worked out around it? Um, because I know, and this is gonna go back to Jeff's question about the insurance, is that our insurance company will not underwrite a policy where there's no lease in place, which is my guess why insurance company never wrote policies, because there's never, no one's been ever, ever able to produce a lease on any building.
So we, we have the lease through Templeton, the state.
Exactly, but that's not...
No, no, just, so we're insured, so that's, that would be important.
Yes, oh, absolutely, no, no, and, and trust me, I, I am thankful that the town has worked with us on that, um, but I, I feel it's important for us, if there was a way that we could put something tempor, I have to imagine this happens in other, in other places.
In essence, and we talked about this actually three, months ago, when we sat before the, uh, select boards, they, they, they can absolutely, they can do, um, they know, Mr. Terrence, as I spoke, they know that this was gonna take a while to look at, that if you see this, but...
Okay, so have we put an official request into that? So could, could we ask that you do that, maybe send him an official request to have some sort of temporary provision for us to inhabit the building, and, and, whatever, indemnifies, blah, and all that legal stuff, um, until this lease is, and I don't know if there's gonna be timeframes, but whatever, I have to imagine this happens, um, so if we can find out, and I think it'll be in our, in just in a mutual interest to have that done, um, to show good faith on both parts, that we, you know, we need to get this done, and there needs to be, um, you know, clauses and big legal words and circular sentences that we all have to try and interpret. Um, once that, uh, our counsel has the, his, his draft or commentary, um, we'll get that out to everybody to take a look at, and then we can reconvene to speak with, um, Templeton and, and work through whatever the issues are. So does that answer your question on the insurance, Jeff?
Yes.
And as, as far as an amount though, have we heard about an amount? Just an estimate, or do we have an actual?
I have an estimate of 48,000, we don't have to do it.
Okay, but no, no, okay, all right.
That's not something we usually pay, so that, that was not in these budget amounts.
Exactly, exactly.
You're absolutely right, so we have to find that, it is in, there's a, there's a, uh...
I understand that, but...
I just wanna be sure, we're clear about that, this one's arguing the validity of that at all.
We should be paying it, and, and it's the right thing, but the fact is, we didn't budget for it.
Wasn't billed on, in this budget.
Right.
Which we had, obviously, we had, so, we know that, and so we will pay it, that's not a, that's not a...
No, but my point is, it's not in this, we had to take it from somewhere.
No, that's right, exactly, we did my, yes.
Any other comments or questions about the lease? More to come on that.
What was the, excuse me, yes, I guess the timeframe on that lease is we're occupying that building in how many days?
Six.
Six.
Five, six, yeah.
So do, can we get, I mean, how, can we have a timeline so that it's in place for the occupants?
Well, we're not gonna have a, a full lease done, that's why I'm just...
No, no, a temporary, just a temporary...
Right, but here's the thing, is we've gotta send the formal request, which Dr. Kazivan do, telling them we'd like to get a, a temporary lease in place, I would ask prior to the scho, I don't know if it can happen, with the school year, so what date would you like, and we can have him say, this is the date we'd like that done, if possible.
Well, before they enter the building.
So, I just, again, um, many of the municipalities that I spoke to, including this one, and prior, prior buildings, there was a lease, um, because, well, first off, it's the obligation of the town to educate its, and, uh, students, and I assume that that had something to do with it, other than the fact that it was a town building that we moved, so when I reached out, when we were to reach out about lease agreements, most people were like, we don't do lease agreements in our own buildings, why would you ask that? Which we was, it's just very different, right? So, understand that there's a precedent, that there's never been one done, and that is your building problem. Um, the, so, based on precedent, but I will of course ask Mr. Terenzini to expedite it, but he's gonna have to go through, I'm sure, his legal, I mean, I don't know what that, you know...
Yeah, and, and if we can get an answer to say, you know, can we expedite something that you, I would feel more comfortable to know that, that we have, and, trust me, I, I don't think there's anyone that's gonna be holding the doors closed to our kids coming in, but I think it's just a good faith thing.
You never know, yeah.
Well, we hope not, um, that we have something that says, yes, we're giving you use of the building, we know we're working out the fine details, um, but you have our blessing to come in, and everybody's indemnifying everybody else, it's insured, we got everything we need as far as indemnification, and, and here we go until we get those, that in place.
Yes.
Okay.[1772.12]
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'll.
Thank you. All right. There was really no, nothing that came up within forty-eight hours. Superintendent report. Enrollment, so I have, we had three things for the superintendent, you can take them in any order you want, enrollment, school choice, staffing.
So I'll just go with, I'll go with all people, enrollment, school choice are the same.
Exactly.
So, the week of moves is really kind of past, in a sense, most places, it does not mean that some people are not going to their choice meeting if they're there, we don't know it, we'll see, we'll, we'll start, we'll school speed a bit of a trip, but right now, we're at one thousand four hundred and twenty-three students that's enrolled, that is up from last year, you know, year over year. So, we have one thousand two hundred and ten district residents in Templeton Phillips, and that is up year over year. Again, we still wait till, again, in September to really, you know, let that sink in. The district choice hasn't changed, it's two seventy-three, it was, you know, if anything, it's, it's dropped a couple, some folks who committed to school choice dropped out, just didn't, just don't wanna do that anymore, and on our end, we won't know if we see them until the kids are actually in seat, so that's why these numbers are, are very fluid, so we won't know, we said they're going to be here and actually show up, sometimes they just use school choice as a place marker, in another district, that, that happens. So, anyway, those are the, basically the two reports. I will say that what is striking, though, when we look at these, I look at residents, and I'm just, I'll get total, some of these elementary class, in terms of residents, are, when I compare them, are much higher than they were, say, in two thousand or twenty-seventeen, two thousand sixteen, they're really, really much higher. Grade six, current grade six, has, you know, has a hundred and two residents, that, that's a, that's a large, that's a class, that's a class. We're seeing a hundred and five, great, in current grade five, residents, and there's no, there's no class under ninety-seven in terms of residents. So, we're, we are seeing, we don't know what that means, we don't know if those are, we know the kids who moved in, some of these students had school choice, matter of fact, they're not, were school choice now, and they've come back, that will all kind of fill in as we, as we go through September, of course, October one. So, the numbers themselves are, are very, are, are high, when I compare year over year, but we really don't take much time until middle of September, when we know that we have.
The, we had decided that we were gonna open a new kindergarten classroom and hire a new teacher, under the premise that we would also take in a group of school choice kids that'll be, would be interspersed with the classes, but that would ultimately fund that position. Have we gotten commitment, and again, I understand Tuesday, or whenever they start, they, they start the week after or something?
Actually, they start a week.
Later.
Later.
Yeah, so we, we really won't know until then if we're not here, but they've said.
But as of right now, we, we have, remember, we started this year with the grades, there's no school choice students there. There are a district total of fourteen school choice students at the kindergarten level. Now, they are dispersed between both, both elementaries, because in order, when you're going through the lists, many, many said, well, that's great, but I also need my first grader, second grader, for example, to, to go to, I can't be in two different places, and we'd say, well, we have Roman Phillips in, which we, some, if you suggest, many said no, and so there was a lot of, again, a lot of no's ultimately. So, that, how it looks, how it looks is that there are, given what I said to you, there are five school choice students at Phillips. Okay, so in other words, the remainder, which we're counting, are at the, are at.
TC.
Thank you, TC, Josh.
Do we have any?
TES.
TES, thank you.
Why are we TES and not?
Templeton Elementary.
Right, but we.
It's not Templeton set.
Is that what it's on it? I just wanna make sure I start, all, okay, all right, Temple, okay, just wanna, I always could just force a habit, I say TC, okay, so TES, got it. Do we have any more kindergarten students that have expressed interest? Because we were looking to have about five more than that, to ensure.
I brought through the whole list, there was some that I was unable to get a hold of, I emailed, I called, some messages, some people got back, and they chose my school, a couple I told you, by, we did it in the district, some had some siblings, which, that's what I'm saying, that they wanted to get.
I think there were nine total that just declined because their, their siblings could not follow, which of course makes, makes all the sense in the world, if you're a parent.
Yeah, so couldn't, can we try maybe one more time to reach out to those who haven't got, because it's, you know, and maybe we wait till next week, just to give them the option, because we, as I said, we, we were looking, I believe there was five more that we, we had hoped to fill those seats, and ensure, I think this covers the funding, but we were hoping to give a little bit of a cushion.
Yes, this goes back to the enrollment issue, where the enrollment's up from town residents, which is wonderful, in, in both districts?
If you give me one second, I will.
I didn't know if you were just speaking for Templeton. Well, obviously, sixth grade's gonna focus.
If, just give me.
Oh, sure.
I can tell you, I can just come back to you.
Because last I knew, there was only sixty-something Phillips in the whole school?
Well, well, let me just, first, if I compare, again, FY, this would be FY twenty, if I compare the number, the snapshot from Phillips, as of FY, which would be the October one number, they were a hundred, district wide, it was a hundred eighty-six, currently, we think, again, one seventy-nine, as I just, as I just said.
So to your point, the, the enrollment in Phillips has gone down, Templeton's enrollment has gone up, so that's.
So, if you're asking about Phillips specifically.
Move, you know, people who live in Phillips.
So, there are a total of a hundred and sixteen total students in Phillips, and seventy-two of them are residents of, of Phillips.
So that's also.
It was sixty-eight at some point.
Yeah, I would have to, honestly, that's something I'd have to.
It's close, it's close.
I'd have to go back. That's also subtracting out, though, again, it's, I'd have to go back with kindergarten, one of them had a fifth grader before, well, in a very early age, and we also had pre-K there as well, and we, we made, because we'd always count all, all residents, whether they be Phillips or, or Templeton, so I'd have to kind of do a, you know, analysis of what that really means now, you know, K through.
I got you, thank you.
Okay, any questions, more questions in enrollment or school choice, because then we wanna talk about staffing, and what's going on, I know we had a report at the last meeting, Ms. Kalice was here, and she informed us of, of changes, and I know that we've, we've had a couple other things come up, so I don't know what.
So, yes, we had, you know, as we, the last three weeks in any school year is, is a terrifying time, because we don't have time to really adjust, so we, we did in fact, I wanna say the latest, but the, the open positions that we have currently, is the high school Spanish teacher who gives, known as a kindergarten Friday, we really need to use, I don't wanna make it sound, just, and, given the fact that we, we lost our band instructor, but we moved Mr. Clapp over to that role, which by the way, not only is it working out fantastic, but it allows a lot more flexibility with math and science classes that may come up over the years, which gives us a lot of flexibility, but anyway, there is a math position that's open because of Mr. Clapp's, you know, move over to, to the, to the band. So, I don't think by long, we haven't.
Oh, yeah, what's, oh, yeah, the, the high school nurse?
So we've interviewed, we've had, we've had several interviews, and it's just a matter of a lot of things, money. On that end, I, I suppose, so we're, but, Mr. Duck's allowed to be two more nursing candidates, just, just yesterday, we have a plan, so when, when school opens, we're, we're sitting there, and we'll make sure we're, what about that?
And then also just because of sports, I know that physicals and.
We actually, yeah, contracted, I guess, I guess that's the word, with our, our former retired high school nurse, who did a great job along with the middle school nurse, who worked, really, honestly, many, many hours to make sure that all those physicals that come in, who are in, that all of that information is then, the sick looked at, discredited, they did a nice job kind of catching up, so we, we, we were able to take care of that, and there were a couple of snap moves, but on, on, really on the parents' end, and I'm not sending this stuff in soon enough, so we were, between, between it all, we were able to handle the onslaught.
Am I correct in saying that the nurse needs to be DESI certified, in order to maintain our grant?
Yes, you are correct to say that.
Thank you.
And we also have a nurse leader position for the grant, we, we talked about that, for the nursing grant, so we're, we have a couple of, the, the nurse leader is not so mission critical, in a sense, because that's outside of the scope, that's all obviously paid from the bottom, I think, DPH's grant that we received last year, but, yes, you have to be DESI certified, and you have to have your nursing licenses as well, so it's a tough, and you have to be RN, from top.
We have to have had experience.
And you have to wanna.
And before you have.
Yes, and not be paid as much as you can make out in the, the public sector.
We don't need to go through that, I mean, we, if, there's an issue there, obviously, that, where certainly no school is exactly attractive to someone who's looking, who's a merit, who want to, you know, make some money, because they could work three days and, you know, they'd be honest, they'd be able to do it, you know, so, it just, that's we heard, but they.
And I think the last time we met, we had, might have had a special ed position that was open, maybe it was.
So since we, yeah, I guess, since we last.
Like, two, two weeks ago was.
Yeah, so we, there was a specialization position that was open at the middle school level, and we built it, there was a math position at the middle school, that was a while ago, we filled it, and then we had another math opening at the middle school, and we filled it, so we were, we've been very fortunate in that level, and we actually had some outstanding candidates for this late in the year, so we're very happy about that.
And we built the high school specialized position as well.
And we filled, yes, the high school specialization position as well, yes, thank you.
Right, so really, other than the Spanish math and nurse at the high school?
The nurse is, like I said, so I'm not, we don't seem to be sweating, so we know they're in good shape, the rest of it's gonna take a.
And I'm assuming, I'll just ask the question, that there is a plan in place, so that when these kids show up in a classroom, there will be somebody there to educate them?
A lot of people don't know this, but anywhere streets, lanes.
See?
Not question.
All right, um, do we have papers ready? Okay, so, Mrs. Barney has worked her magic, and.
I might want to plug out, if I have a couple minutes?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that we're looking for extended day staff, those are the great focuses, in the morning, down the school.
Just pass the room, take a look at it.
We have those positions posted, we can take a look, in school, if that's a bonus, so, we have them posted, we need to come to the meeting, so, thank you.
Are we signing both?
You could, yeah, you can sign it, we'll do, we'll do an official, we're gonna do the, the vote, the cart after the horse, I guess. But I would, I would entertain a motion to approve the warrant as presented for signature for the, would we say September twenty-fifth, district-wide town meeting at seven PM?
I make that motion?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second, any discussion on that? Saying that, I'll do a roll call, I'll start on this end, Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Chardier?
Yes.
Mrs. Strifalo?
Yes.
Mrs. Cosell?
Yes.
And Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
Sure.
And Mr. Mason?
Sorry.
And Mrs. Hughes says, yes, so, we have unanimous approval on that warrant, we will all be signing the two copies.
Next meeting.
One's coming back. There was just one other point that I wanted to bring up on here, we, there was some correspondence that came in, that was sent out to everybody, I believe, Deb, you did get a copy, we were inadvertently left off, and it was a letter sent to us from Mr., I have it right here.
Oh, I got that, that I got.
Okay, oh, Mr. Francis, he did speak at the district-wide town meeting, I just, I would like to make a quick comment on this, just to recognize the fact that he took the time to write this letter, he also, to us and the Templeton Select Board, he also sent a letter to Jeff Riley, who is the Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education, very forceful with his demands. I did just wanna bring one point of information about some of the comments on here, and basically, they all center around the fact that, the auditor Suzanne Bump did a report a couple of years back on regional school financing, she goes out, she's done a lot of really great audit reports, and has brought a lot of issues to light. I was lucky enough to attend a meeting with her lead analyst on that report, where he went through and explained a lot of things, I've actually been through it twice, a lot of really great information. I just want to educate, I think, more the public, including the boards, anyone else who's listening, that advocating for additional school funding is needed, that we can't argue about that. The problem becomes that the state doesn't pay the whole bill of education, they push the funding back to the municipalities, their target goal is fifty-nine cents on a dollar gets paid by the towns and cities, and thirty, what was it, forty-one, sorry, so fifty-nine, forty-one cents gets paid by the state, and that's how they calculate the aid pool every year. Whether that's right or not, that's another thing that needs to be looked at and get, get pushed on. So, this is part one, is, is looking for all of these additional funding mechanisms, foundation budget changes, circuit breaker changes, name it, regional transportation reimbursements. At the end of the day, the municipalities in this district, I believe, Temple, Phillips will pay a little more than Templeton, just because of the way the minimum contributions are factored out, we're at about, I wanna say forty-one or forty-two percent that the towns contribute overall, when I add it together, versus the state, so for every dollar of additional aid that we wanna demand, we gotta pick up forty-two cents of that, so you need to be very careful in the thought process of how this gets managed, because it is a double-edged sword. Yes, the state's gonna give us more dollars, but yes, they're gonna expect the towns to contribute. So, I just wanna put that out there for people to, to think about, because most of the advocacy you hear comes from people east of four ninety-five, and they're advocating for a lot of the foundation budget changes, because they see immediate impact, they're not in hold harmless, they have a lot of low economically disadvantaged, they have a lot of ELL population, those are the items being addressed. We don't have quite that mix, and we're hold harmless, we were a hundred and thirteen residents short last year to get any relief in our foundation formula, so if you take the per pupil times one thirteen, that's the difference between what the state gives us, and what they said we should have gotten, they gave us a lot more money than we needed, it was a million and, I think, a million three. So we just need to be careful as we move forward with advocacy, that we're advocating for the right things, I call it page two on the funding sheets, you get the foundation budget, and then page two is where the towns are gonna pay, and that's another place that most legislators have no understanding about, and that is something that I personally have been advocating a lot for, and I hope to bring my voice, I also sit on the Mass Association of Regional Schools, I'm a board member there, to bring that issue to light, and hopefully get some advocacy, advocacy going at that level as well. So just something to keep in mind, and as I said, I really appreciate Ms. Knoll's thought and, and Mr. Francis's thought and, and research he did, but we just need to be careful what we're asking for, because some of it might come back to bite us with additional funding from ourselves as taxpayers in the towns we live in, so that was my soapbox for the day.
Thank you.
All right, so we've got two warrants signed, I don't think I've signed it here for me to sign, everybody, okay.
Just wondering, do we have the letter from, is it Eric Smith, from the police union, in, admitted into our minutes?
Yeah.
It's, it's.
It'll be in there, yeah.
Thank you, just checking.
Okay, do we have any other business? Okay, do we have any other business? So, our next scheduled meeting is September eighteenth, right back here in the Kiva, although we are gonna look at, we'd like to get, have a meeting in the Templeton Elementary School, TES, at some point, I don't know if it'll work out for September or not, but if there is a schedule change, is a building, we'll let everybody know, but the plan is the Kiva, six o'clock on the eighteenth, if there's nothing else.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, thank you, everyone for coming.